I'd like to call this meeting, we're in Newark City Council order. Janine, please call the roll.
Mr. Lang.
Present.
Mr. Marmee.
Present.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Labutis.
Here.
We have all here or present this evening. Please rise for the invocation by Mr. Blake, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Blake?
Aye, bow your heads. Guide us to know the power of prayer. As we pray for our leaders, we pray for those less fortunate than ourselves. We pray for the children of our city. Cast your love on each of us for revival. May the strength of God sustain us, may the power of God preserve us, may the hands of God protect us, may the way of God direct us. May the love of God be with us tonight and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? Okay. Move on to the minutes of our September 21st, 2020 meeting. Is motion to approve those? Motion by Mr. Labutis.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barker. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time. That passes. Thank you. We have a few appointments this evening by Mayor Hall. Mayor Hall is not feeling, I guess Mayor Hall is at a different meeting tonight, I'm sorry. So he will not be here tonight. He's reappointing Candy Ingle, Chris Hardness, Mark Mutter, and his alternate Jillian Flowers to the Edna Corporate Park Joint Economic Development Zone, JET 2. The two-year terms will begin October 20th, 2020, and will expire October 19th, 2022. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same time. That passes. Thank you. We have three reports this evening from standing committees. We have one from finance, one from safety, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have no reports from city officials this evening. We have one communication from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, the 2020 Annual Discharge Fee Preliminary Notice. That will be received and filed. We have a public hearing tonight. So we're going to open the public hearing. Janine, would you read the public hearing, please? Anytime today, please.
Okay. Just, I'm reading the ordinance.
The public hearing, you can just read what's on the agenda.
Ordinance number 20-18 by Mr. Rath, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 44 Northwest Moore Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office District, to MB, Medium Intensity Business District, zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Now, this is the public hearing. This is a chance for your comments, either for or against. I will say, the zoning planning commission, here's what they had to say. The zoning classification for 44 Northwest Moore Avenue shall remain as currently zoned in the GO Office District. And the requested zoning district change recommended is to be denied. So, that being said, council will have to have seven votes overturn this to make it GO. But they did deny it. So, is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this zoning? Anyone here? Yes or no, for or against? One more time? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. Janine, please read 2018 again.
Ordinance number 20-18 by Mr. Rath, an ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 44 Northwest Moore Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office District, to MB, Medium Intensity Business District, zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
You've heard the second reading of 20-18. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion to adopt 20-18.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marmee. Is there any discussion on 20-18? Mr. Rath?
Mr. President, thank you, sir. In light of the zoning classification recommendation to deny this, and with the absence of anybody to speak on behalf, I will be voting this down. It would encourage everybody to do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Anyone else? Janine, please call and roll a vote.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Mr. Marmee?
No.
Mr. Rath?
No.
Mr. Barker?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Bub?
No.
Mr. Fennell?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Labutis?
No.
2018 fails 10 to 0. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is your chance to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to speak this first chance? Please raise your hand. Sir, we'll start with you. If you'd come up front, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Dave Lipstru. Can you understand me with this thing on?
Everybody understand okay?
Yeah. I live at 40 North Fortieth Street, and I'll read my comments, which I provided to the clerk. This is concerning the improvements going in on North Fortieth Street as part of the large water mine project. The recent wholesale clearing of all trees in the right-of-way of North Fortieth Street was an outrage to me personally, and the neighborhood generally. Such action by the city shows a total lack of sensitivity and concern for the residents, and worse, a huge disconnect between city officials and the public for whom they work. In over 30 years as a municipal land planner, I have never seen such callous disregard for the environment and those who inhabit it. I recently purchased my home on North Fortieth Street precisely because of the abundance of mature trees, some in excess of 100 years old, and the excellent landscaping of the multifamily dwelling complex immediately across from my home. Had I been aware of what was to come, I would not have purchased the property. Trees are critically important to our lives. They provide oxygen, store huge amounts of carbon, which offsets the effects of climate upheaval, and absorb large quantities of stormwater. They also provide traffic calming and sound abatement. The city cannot afford to wantonly destroy trees because of the lack of proper, careful planning in advance of development improvement projects. This is simply no longer the way things are done, and with the rapidly changing climate, it is neither a wise approach nor financially viable one. Taxpayers expect much more of their public policymakers than a hands-off approach to events with the potential for major impacts. Sustainable development methods are now a widely accepted method of accomplishing projects while protecting natural resources such as trees, which provide multiple ecosystem services benefits such as stormwater flow management at zero cost to the community. I cannot begin to adequately express my disappointment with the City of Newark over this matter. The city has great potential. However, for that potential to be actualized, the approach to land development and infrastructure must change. Respect for the environment and a successful economic development program are not mutually exclusive. In fact, they support one another. People desire to live and do business in a community that places a high priority on environmental protection as well as a strong economy. Newark can and must do better in this regard. While the foregoing comments are admittedly critical, I am more than willing to assist the city on a voluntary basis in formulating and implementing a more ecologically sustainable approach to land development. I'm confident that such an approach will prove most worthwhile to Newark over time. And that would also include a request that the city consider, and I don't expect an answer now, but consider replacing some trees on that street, because everything in the right-of-way is gone. And I mean, if you walk, I encourage you all to drive over there and take a look at it. It's before and after, it's incredible. And I very much appreciate the opportunity to make these comments, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else for this first section? Ms. Mossholder? Anyone else want to speak this first section? Put your hand up now. Okay.
Linda Mossholder, 224 Green Meadow Drive in Newark. It's my understanding that we were unable to reconvene the safety committee meeting last session because of, basically, we didn't have the capability. I just wanted to add a few things from the discussion that took place. I understand that the council received copies of the AI Analytical Insights Report. One of the comments, and I think most of you, I'll be honest with you, I have not read all 115 pages, but I did read the parts of some of the concerns about the community. And one of the concerns of the community was the lack of collaboration between providers. That was mentioned several different places in the report. During the safety committee meeting, I did hear that Deb Tegmeyer at the Housing Coalition, who has done a tremendous amount of work with this report, is going to have her board see which parts of the report, action plans that they could take on. To me, that does not sound like collaboration. I think we need to have other entities involved. To my knowledge, the Licking County Housing Initiative, which is required by HUD to meet on a regular basis, has not met since January. This would be a good place to start. So I would encourage that to take place. The other thing that the report contained is to keep the community updated on what's happening with the homeless situation. Part of the contract with Analytical Insights was to have them come back, and I know due to COVID, they did not do this, and give another report to the community as a whole. The community was very involved in this process. They had three community meetings. They had stakeholder meetings, which were focus groups. Part of the contract with AI was to have a public GO meeting. To my knowledge, and I think I'm still a member of the task force, I still don't know if the task force is in existence or not. We have had no communication. So I know that Deb Dingus, who is a member of the task force, is trying to get Analytical Insights to do some type of community meeting. Because I think the community deserves to know what's in this report. You know, a lot of taxpayer dollars went into it. The other thing that we didn't have time to address during the safety committee was the Lukin Solutions contract. I am kind of, I am concerned that that was terminated. Phase two of that contract involved having Sally Lukin, who has extensive experience in this area, to come up with a community acceptance plan, knowing that sometimes a low-barrier shelter can be controversial. This plan would have addressed things like, what's going to be done with the safety in the area? How is this going to be run? And it would have answered some of the questions that will come up once a low-barrier shelter work begins. So I am kind of concerned that that did not take place. I think all of you who are representatives of this community do not want phone calls when, you know, construction or renovations start on this shelter saying, why weren't we informed? So I was, you know, I was very concerned that that did not take place. That was part of her contract. She wanted to do some training on that. I received one email with possible schedule for a two-hour training. Part of this community acceptance plan was working with safety. It was working with potential homeless operators. I think this would have been of vital importance to make this be successful. So I know that we don't have, we don't want to rehash the whole thing in another safety committee meeting, but I do think council needs to be aware of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rochelle Voland-Smith, 237 Violet Court. I would like to thank Linda for her speaking to him in agreement with this. I think it is important to rehash this and involve the public in it. I have seen, incidentally, in terms of his issue, Fortieth Street, and I think it could be possible to put in both the sidewalk and have some landscaping and keep that as part of, part of our neighborhood, which is crucial to our area. So anyway, good to see you all back, and thank you.
Thank you. We have no ordinances on the second reading this evening. We'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, 20-30.
Ordinance number 20-30 by Mr. Bub and Mr. Marmee, an ordinance amending the position, classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark Department of Service, Division of Parks and Cemetery by creating the additional position of Browns Maintenance Worker and setting the compensation therefore.
20-30 will be held till our next meeting on the 19th. Next, we move on to resolutions on the second reading, 20-66.
Resolution number 20-66 by Mr. Rath and Mr. Marmee, a resolution authorizing the City of Newark, Ohio, to enter into a marketing agreement with utility service partners Private Label Inc., USP, doing business as Service Line Mortis of America, SLWA Company, for advertisement to the city's residents of warrant plans for repairs of external water lines, external sewer lines, and home plumbing on residential property.
You've heard the second reading of 20-66. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion, we adopt 20-66.
Motion by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 20-66? Seeing none, Janine, please call and roll a vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutis?
Yes.
20-66 passes 10 to 0. Next on the second reading, we have 20-67.
Resolution number 20-67 by Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 20-67. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-67.
Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 20-67? Seeing none, Janine, please call and roll a vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutis?
Yes.
20-67 passes 10 to 0. Finally, on the second reading, we have 20-68.
Resolution number 20-68 by Mr. Rath and Mr. Marmee, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contract in the rebuilding of two-belt press de-watering systems at the wastewater treatment plant.
You've heard the second reading of 20-68. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion, we adopt 20-68.
Motion by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Barker. Is there any discussion on 20-68? Seeing none, Janine, please call and roll a vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutis?
Yes.
That passes 10, 20-68 passes 10 to 0. And finally, resolutions on the first reading, 20-71.
Resolution number 20-71 by Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
20-71 will be held for two weeks till our next reading, till our next meeting for our second reading. And finally, we have 20-72.
Resolution number 20-72, expedite by Mr. Marmee, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
20-72.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule in Resolution 20-72.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bub. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a payout of, for an employee that needs to be expedited to get them their funds immediately. Also, we have some safety supplies and some overtime dollars for safety forces that need to be paid, so we want to get those back into those funds as quickly as possible to make sure we can take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Janine, please call and waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutis?
Yes.
20-72 has been waived. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-72.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 20-72? Seeing none, Janine, please call and roll a vote.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Labutis?
Yes.
And 20-72 passes 10 to 0. And that concludes the legislation this evening. Thank you. Next on the agenda, our final section for comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. This is not a debate with council. This is your chance to be heard. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Sir? Anyone else? Thank you.
Growing up in the north end of Newark.
Name and address, please.
Timothy Ray Barnes, 927 Wyant Avenue.
Thank you.
As, being born and raised in the short north end of Newark, Keller Elementary School District, Hollander Street, Maple Avenue, Stevens, that area, I witnessed what, as a child, I didn't understand what the problem was. I think I understand it now. Water fluoridation is not the greatest thing since bubble gum. I know it's mandated, but Hitler mandated the Jews be executed and persecuted. Did that make it right? I think if you took a look at the bus riders, born and raised, going to Hillview, your bus riders, born and raised, going to the east end of that junior high on Battler, you'll find they have a much noticeable lower grade point average than the other kids. I'm thinking if you check the local fertility treatment center placed, it would be a four-to-one ratio, city-born and raised people compared to county-born and raised people. The sodium fluoride is a corrosive. There's nothing positive about it inside the human body. Toothpaste label clearly states, do not ingest. Shouldn't be ingesting fluoride. Your traffic issues on North 21st Street, ridiculous. Basic traffic laws not being enforced. I don't know how many times I was a Donato at Donato's driver on North 21st Street. Constantly coming through 16 and 21st is a nightmare. You need to change that sign that sits at the bottom of 16 West that reads, "Right Turn On Red, Curb Lane Only." It needs to add "curb lane" to "curb lane," because way too many people come out of there making a right turn on red, coming out two lanes, sometimes three, all the way over so they get in the left-hand turn lane. That's illegal driving. It's an illegal turn. They do the same thing at stop signs. Come out two lanes and go nowhere. If you're going up and down 21st Street, pacing the car in the right-hand lane, you're in the left-hand lane. To me, you're littering the lane with your car. Traffic laws, three things you do in the left-hand lane: pass, move right, move left. That would greatly improve the traffic problem on 21st Street. Remove the left-hand turn into them two coffee shops. Too many people be in that passing lane, go to the coffee shop, they turn over and they put half the car in the turn lane, and then the other half still clogging up the passing lane. Like I said, those are basic traffic laws. If you'd have forced them, you could come up with the money that you've lost on your property tax value, which, that's just a victim, you were a victim of your own making. Fraudging up people's property taxes is exactly what happened. I know you frauded them because you're missing 20% at least, if not 40% of your property value, since I've become a homeowner. Went from a $50,000 median to a $40,000 median. That's saying a whole swallowed 22,000, $50,000 valued homes. That's basic math. I realize crainer property got annexed out. You tore down the 50 homes with the exes. You probably had numerous house fires, or have burnt down a few. That's far across from 22,000 homes. Let's hear it. What else do I want to talk about? Harvey taxes? That pretty much covered it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any city officials to say that? Mr. Lewis?
Roger Lewis, water administrator for the city, 34 South Fifth Street. Just want to make a quick comment about the comments on the Fortieth Street project. You know, we have offered to, as I understand it, the city engineer and our project engineer have offered to replace those trees that were out there, and replacing any trees that are being torn down out there. I also take a little bit of offense to saying that we're not ecologically responsible. When we take a look at the downtown project, I spent over $3 million for a passive stormwater treatment system as part of that project. It's a keystone of the Ohio Department of Development funding for economic development and economic, ecological development. So, our Fortieth Street project here, that's going here, we have a lot of passive treatment systems in there as well. We've designed all those into those projects. The landfill, that's a complete passive system out there. We installed trees, several hundred trees, to treat that waste in the landfill. So, you know, we take a lot of pride in the work that we do for the water of this area. Certainly, we're welcome to work with him on any of the projects that we have going on, any of the work we're doing. We're welcome to do that. But just want to say that, you know, this is one of our goals, is to have a system like this, and to be said, and, you know, that we don't do that is really a falsehood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Spurgeon?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see the committee back in council chambers. Quickly, for you that don't know me, many of you do, but I am Bill Spurgeon. I've been the Human Resources Director since June 21st. I want to publicly thank Mayor Hall, giving me an opportunity to serve the great city of Newark again, and the wonderful things his administration is doing. We are poised and ready to make sure our appointing authorities and our division head have the talent they need to meet their mission, as well as promoting harmonious labor relations. Christina Barth is one of the finest assistant directors you could ever hope to inherit, and I'm fortunate to have her. We have engaged our labor representatives, as evidenced by some of the legislation we proposed, the Personnel Committee, and I'd like to thank the chair and members for their support. We've also targeted a software solution we believe is going to create an efficiency in government and a better customer experience, and we're going to come back with a funding stream to do that. We're working very, very hard to make sure your needs are met, and just wanted to make sure I'd introduce myself to the committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. I'll step in for the mayor and say, good to see you back.
Thank you.
Law Director Spurgeon, or Law Director, Law Director Spurgeon, not now, I'm going to introduce you to the law director. Law Director Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll pat.
Thank you, Director Sasse. I didn't get a very close look. Clemson?
Never miss an opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back, everybody. It's good to see everybody in person through glass. It's a little strange being in here, but, you know, glad to be back in chambers. Director Roves, thank you for your work to get this all set up for us, and work with the Health Director to make sure we did this the right way. Want to extend a thank you to Joe Paul for a maintenance issue he helped me with in the Fifth Ward. Mr. Lewis, thank you for your comments. You know, I think it's a testament to what you guys generally do as far as thinking through environmental issues when these projects come forward. I can't think of the last one that didn't pass unanimously, and, you know, I think everybody on council has faith in what you guys are doing there, so thank you. Linda, thank you for your comments. You know, I do want to, and I guess I'll have to follow up with Deb Tegmeyer, others from the task force. You know, the budget that we got back from the task force, and we were asking about, you know, what happened, the money, did show that there was money left from the task force, so I do want to understand what's happening with that money. Obviously, it's become very challenging to have public meetings. As you see, this is the first time we're actually able to hold our own public meeting. Oh, Director Rose, yeah.
John, I can answer that. The funds that were left over from the task force are being returned to the people who funded it in proportion of the work that was done.
That's, I was hoping that would be the case, so I guess that's the answer with the funds that are left over. You know, I do think there are still conversations that need to be had. Obviously, we need to work through the challenges of having public meetings in a pandemic. I had an opportunity to have a pretty extensive conversation with Trish Perry down at Newark Comas Outreach, and it was interesting just standing on the corner with her for a couple hours. We were chatting the number of people that came by and looking for controversy with the Lucan report. I understand the frustration there. I would have liked to spend a little bit more time in that conversation, actually focusing on the report from AI, and I do agree with you, I think we need to have a further discussion, have AI back to, not necessarily here in council chambers, I don't think it's the right forum. It's really hard, as a, you know, Mr. Laboudes, I think was having a hard time picking on everybody, getting everybody a chance to speak. I think that's a really challenging format to do that through, so hopefully we can find a different format for that conversation to continue. Thank you. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a Finance Committee meeting for two weeks. Just a couple of quick comments. Mr. Lipstroke, I believe, you know, with trees in the right-of-way, that's, the city has always been very, very cognitive of, you know, the concerns with residents with that, but in reality, we have, we have laws in the books that say that no trees are allowed in the right-of-ways, and something like this, where we have a project that we need to go through there, in order to complete the project, those trees had to be removed. And I'm glad to hear that Roger said they indicated they were going to try to replace them if somebody, if individuals wanted them replaced. The gentleman, Mr. Barnes, I believe he left also. Property taxes is pretty much out of our control, the county more or less handles that, and so we really just get our proportion or a portion of it based upon what their calculations are. We really don't have that. Yeah, there's been a number of different studies on North 21st Street with traffic issues and concerns. Honestly, if we tried to enforce the right lane only and less passing, cars would never get up and down 21st Street. There's just way too much traffic in order to do that. And then how do you enforce the folks that are straddled? I mean, you try to do your best, and the police officers aren't going to necessarily be there at the right time, but that happens everywhere, and hopefully we just, there's improved driving with that. And I'm glad to be back, I'm glad to see everybody, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Rath?
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. I want to say welcome back. It's good to see you. In regards to Mr. Lipstroke's comments, and unfortunately, he's gone, but it's interesting you can take a painting and cover it completely with a white sheet, and uncover one square inch of it, and ask somebody how much they pay for it, and hold it off at auction, it probably wouldn't even sell. You pull off that sheet and find out that the painting is actually the Mona Lisa. That's exactly what we're doing. We're looking at 40th Street, one tiny little square inch of city, and we're looking at some trees that came down. We don't look at the big picture, we don't look at what we do. I wanted to say thank you to Roger Lewis for coming up and speaking. We do do a lot, and we do take that into consideration. We always take the environment into consideration, and we do a lot to make sure that that is very well taken care of. To look at a thumbnail sketch of a tiny little incident, or a tiny little location in the vast city that Newark is, and to make some of the statements that were made here, I think is incredibly inappropriate. So I just wanted to get that off my chest, for what it's worth. With that, I'll call a Service Committee meeting, and I think I will go back.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. President. As others have said, it is good to be back here in chambers and to see everyone. Director Spurgeon officially, instead of being on Zoom, welcome back. It's always good to have you here. I'd like to thank Director Rhodes, he helped with some property maintenance issues in the past two weeks that could have been serious, and he was able to get it taken care of. I would like to say also that I'm thankful that I'm not having to manage a Zoom meeting tonight, and with that, I will pass.
Mr. Barker? Mr. Blake?
Just want to welcome a Southender back to the City Hall, so, you know, welcome back, Bill Spurgeon. And I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Bub?
Yeah, too. Welcome back, Bill. Professional, prepared to do a nice job. You're a great addition to the city. Very happy to have you back. Also, nice to have our council clerk here in person, saying, "You're doing a great job." And just wanted to also encourage, just kind of changing the subject, just encourage all council members, members in the audience, to keep supporting our local restaurants if they need it. We're going through a tough time still, so do your best, get out and support our local business, and with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Fennell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to welcome, and it was nice to meet you, Mr. Spurgeon, as well. I look forward to bringing you back here. Excellent addition to the committee as well. And with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Ms. Hall?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy to see you back as well. I just wanted to thank Code and our special ops. They came to our neighborhood, I have no idea how many hours they were involved in a takedown, but, and I missed it, but I heard from neighbors that there was a lot of details, it was like a TV show, people were arrested, and it was quite a little nest of things going on right there. I would imagine there's a lot of surveillance hours, they would be parked, you know, in dark areas and watching this house. It was really something, and they took care of it, and it was wonderful. So I just wanted to thank them and Chief Baum as well for following through on many complaints, not just mine, but, you know, other people in the neighborhood, and it's pretty well done, so thank you. And it's good to see everybody. Be back here, like, in real time. Anyway, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Harris?
Yeah, it's good to see Mr. Spurgeon back, and Janine, you did a nice job tonight. Good to see you. I want to thank Spencer for always helping with the Zoom meetings and all our technical difficulties. And I also want to thank, I don't know necessarily why, I think the administration of the city for what they did with Don Edwards Park a couple years ago. My nephew played in the baseball tournament over the weekend, and they live in Grove City, and there was a lot of people from out of town down the park, and they were really impressed with the park, nice and clean. One gentleman told me, he's got an older son, 16-year-old, and Don Edwards was the first park to open in central Ohio back in June, and they spent most of their summer here. They were impressed with the downtown and the restaurants of, you know, with that being open, we were able to bring, you know, some people from out of town to support our local businesses. So it's good to see everybody, and if nothing else, I think the only good thing so far in 2020 is the Cleveland Browns are 3-1, but that let pass.
Well, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Laboudes?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is good to be back in council chambers, and just want to thank Director Rhodes for getting chambers set up so that we can come back, and I wanted to welcome back Director Spurgeon as well. Glad to have you back on the team. It's good to see you. With that, I will pass.
Thank you, Ms. Laboudes. This is our clerk, Janine Paul. For those of you that don't know her, you might want to introduce yourself. She has been our clerk since March, but we hired her right about the time that COVID started. Not sure I can blame you for that, but now we all of a sudden went on Zoom, so even though you're kind of a long-time employee now, you haven't met everybody, so at least you have a chance to see them. So, thanks, you're doing a great job. Thank you all for coming tonight, we appreciate it. For those of you that asked me about the meeting on Zoom or on YouTube, we are going to try to livestream the meeting next meeting, so we'll see how that works. I think we've got a plan in place. We'll see if it works or not, so we'll let you know as that goes on.